We are promoting one of our officers to the rank of lieutenant and they will be assigned to our administration division, which is some of the most boring parts of police work that you can imagine. It's all of the ancillary duties. So if I could call Officer Stephanie Garcia to come up up front with me. I'll tell you a little bit about about her. She is currently working in the administration portion of the police department as an officer. And we're doing some reshuffling, putting a lieutenant that's currently assigned in administration into patrol. And then with Officer Garcia's promotion, she'll take over that role in administration. Some of those things, as you've got in your packet, very brief description, managing some of our training, some of our fleet operations, our property and evidence. You've seen in our annual report, we keep a lot of property and evidence at the police department. The alarm ordinance, and I want to take a quick pause right there. Officer Garcia's work alone, and this is an estimate right now, we'll have some hard figures for you after we reach the 12-month market, what she's been doing, but we are looking at close to a 40% reduction in that first year since she's been working on our alarm ordinance. We've had an ordinance on the books for a long time. It's sort of remained dormant. We haven't really enforced it. Officer Garcia picked that up, took the ball, has run down the field, has put it over the goalpost for again, what we believe will be around a 40% reduction in false alarms. And that's significant. If you think about the manpower, the resources, the tax dollars that are tied up in responding to false alarms. And I expect that to grow as that ordinance continues to be enforced. That's just one thing that she's been doing. Crime analysis, doing things with GIS that she's been doing, public relations and social media. Those are just a few of the things. And one of our big things, you know that we are an accredited agency through the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation. We're a best practices agency. Mayor J. Rowe, when he was the chief, got Rockport Police Department to that level. We have re-certified or re-accredited. And we have to have a program manager. Officer Garcia took that over several months ago. She's doing a bang-up job at that. Really, that should be managed by a ranking officer. But nonetheless, her technical skills, her administrative skills are second to none. So I went ahead and made her start doing it as an officer. But now that she'll be promoted to lieutenant in just a second, it'll be more commensurate with that rank. So that'll be a big thing is that she will be the actual project manager for the Texas Police Chiefs Association Foundation's best practices recognition. So some information about Officer Garcia, soon to be lieutenant. She'd been with the Rockport Police Department actually for about, coming up on 23 years, I think. I'm sorry, 13 years, 13 years. She started in 2010 with, in dispatch, actually. And then she moved to records. She worked as the chief's coordinator and then went to property and evidence. She was the first ever property and evidence technician for the police department. One of the big reasons it's so well organized and so well managed is that she kicked that off. And then she went to the Delmar Regional Police Academy in Corpus Christi and graduated in 2019, became a sworn peace officer, served in the patrol division for two years. And then against her will, she went to municipal court as our warrant, as our bailiff and our warrant officer. And then for the last month, she's been the administrative officer. Her experiences in law enforcement, civilian response to active shooter training. So when citizens ask us to do training in active shooter response, she's one of those. Public information officer, sexual assault, family violence investigator, emergency management training. She has over 200 hours of evidence in crime scene training. And currently, she's attending Delmar College, should complete her associate degree in arts and criminal justice in the spring of 2024, plans to continue on to get a bachelor's degree as soon as she can. She's married to Captain Nathan Garcia, who's over our patrol division. They have an 11-year-old daughter Hayden. And I'd like to take that moment because when Captain Garcia promoted, I mispronounced Hayden's name. Actually, I called her the wrong name, one of the other kids. And Hayden attends Rockport Fulton Middle School. And in her spare time, Officer Garcia enjoys spending time with family and working on home renovation projects. Get all that in there? I'll step over here real quick and get this done. Congratulations, Lieutenant. Okay. And so one of the things that we do ceremony, so that's the official promotion, but these things don't happen, especially in law enforcement. It's not in a vacuum that we promote. It takes a lot of hard work by the officer themselves. But it's a full commitment from family and from that support group that comes around, that's around you. So to just about every one of the promotions that I've done here, certainly in Lubbock, too, my spouse comes to those because she knows what that's like to sit at home hours on end when you get called out and when you work your way up the ranks. And so to recognize that, we always let the officer have an important person. It's usually a spouse. Sometimes it's a parent or a sibling, or just a great mentor come and actually pin their new badge on them. And so I believe that Lieutenant Garcia's husband, Captain Garcia, is going to do those honors. So we'll let them do that.
Thank you, Chief. Next agenda item is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed the speaker's card located at the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Our written comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. On any agenda item or any subject matter will be read at the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be caused for the chair to terminate offenders' time to speak. At this time, I have two cards to be read. I have Kristy Thompson-Hut.
Evening to all of my fellow citizens and neighbors. My name is Kristy Thompson, otherwise known as Kristy Thompson-Hut, or just Kristy Hut. I live on the west side of Prairie Road, 2201 Rockport. It's unfortunate to come before the city council, city staff, and my neighbors after listening to the city council meeting on July 11th, two weeks ago. I was disheartened by the fact that two qualified applicants, myself included, were not considered to join any of the open slots on the city boards. Every year, boards, committees, and the like have members finishing out their terms. Terms expire. And Ward 2 has zero representation on the P&amp;Z board. That was why I applied. I volunteer for a handful of organizations and term timeframes are laid out. There's no automatic renewal. For 15 minutes, this council said the boards are full, but the terms ended June 1st. I submitted my application the Friday before the July 11th meeting as an award four citizen. I even heard the city manager confirm that my application was in your city council packets. Thank you. Mayor J. Rowe strongly suggested that those who would like to participate in boards or committees to come to meetings. I've been active in this community and attend in person, or I watch it on live stream. I'd hope any amount of participation would be sufficient. As my Ward 2 councilperson, councilperson Hale said, and I'm paraphrasing, she stated that the P&amp;Z board is a vital one. She also said that the Ward 2 won, Ward 2 is a higher-growth ward. And she also said, we need to find the right people, regardless of where they live. I'm qualified. How do I know this? Is it because I'm a successful recruiter and I've been vetting C-level executives for almost 12 years, or that I was a licensed Realtor? And I'm currently a member of multiple organizations in the area, such as Master Gardeners, three years as their fundraiser chair, two years as their vice president. This year will be my third year as Hummerbird Volunteer Chair. And I'm also part of South Rockport Neighbors and a few other organizations that illustrate my love for my neighbors and my community. I contacted our Rockport City Secretary requesting the documents stating the qualifications this council continually brought up at last meeting. Ms. Teresa Valdez promptly responded. Ms. Thompson-Hut, per your public information requests below, there are no specific qualifications for City of Rockport committees, specifically the Planning and Zoning Commission, except that members must be qualified voters of the City of Rockport. I am a qualified voter. Mayor J. Rowe stated that he wants to spread things out, yet there's one board member who's termed out, but still a part of three different boards. Where was the call-out for participation? I applied, a Ward 4 person applied. There's many fine folks behind me that I'm not sure have been asked. And if you want to accept me, what sort of bar is this council setting? I'm very befuddled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have one more. We have Adelaide Marlette.
Thank you. I'm Adelaide Marlette. I am currently serving as the facilitator for the Greater Rockport Country Club Stormwater Drainage Team. I live at 456 Augusta, Rockport, Texas. I'm here with my wingman tonight, Bron Rourke, who also lives in the country club area. And she's very active with us. I'm here to make two announcements. One, we have just completed a really good talking paper, talking map, I guess. Our engineer has been working on it for a few days. And he gave it to me hot off the press. And I wanted to share it with you as we also announced that we are extending an invitation to the council to tour the country club area with us. Once you get through budgeting and things slow down, I know y'all all work full-time, so it's not an easy process. But we want you to see how beautiful your project turned out and how things are going. And we talk a lot about the drainage and the problems, but there is so much beautiful in the country club to see. I don't mean to sound haughty. It's just in our subdivision. How's that? The big oak trees, the shade that's 10 degrees cooler than outside. And it's just, we want to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Would like, any of the council members like to remove an item off the consent agenda? And I would like to have a motion.
Not to remove, but just a point of clarification, if I may, on the minutes. You, after the meeting, you sent us, city manager, you sent us a email saying qualified voter was the only thing. Not just want that to be public, I guess. In our discussion, that wasn't brought up, but the only...
That's not going to be part of the minutes?
Not part of the minutes, but just a point of information.
Just go ahead and make a statement as to what it said, and then it's public. How about that?
Okay. To be on our board's only qualification is to be a qualified voter in the city limits of Rockport.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Word one?
Aye.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
Regular agenda, number seven, conduct a public hearing to consider equestery zone property located at 607 Sunset Drive, also known as J. Smith Survey, acres .3078, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to R2, second single-family dwelling district, currently zoned R1, first single-family dwelling district. I'm here to open the public hearing at 6:45. We have, and this is Teresa, I'm sorry, this was public hearing. Okay. I have two cards for the public hearing. We have April Clark. Is she here?
We're April and Nathan Clark. We're the owners of 607 Sunset. We also own Country Bay Construction and are the contractors on this property. We purchased the property in March of this year. And at the time of purchase, the property had a hurricane damaged and abandoned trailer home, which we've already removed, and the 672 square foot garage with a full bathroom. According to the survey we had done in April, the lot dimensions are 100 feet across by 134 feet deep and is currently zoned R1. Our plan is to have the property rezoned from a single R1 lot into two separate R2 properties. Currently, Sunset Drive is already comprised of both R1 and R2 zoning, each of those classified as single-family dwellings. This prevents our request from being considered spot zoning. From the proposed zoning, or for the proposed zoning trade change, the property line is set to be drawn down the middle of the existing 100-foot wide lot, placing the oversized garage on one R2 property. And the second R2 property will be where the damaged trailer was previously located. On the first R2 property, the 672 square foot garage will be converted into a coastal cottage-style home. The square footage of this proposed cottage meets the 600 square foot minimum dwelling size for an R2 property. The pre-existing carport and two-car driveway also meet the minimum requirements for parking. The cement foundations for all three, the cottage home conversion, the two-vehicle-wide carports, and the driveway already exist. No further non-permeable substrate would be added, therefore making previous flooding concerns raised from a neighbor unwarranted. Next, on the second R2 lot where the trailer was removed, we would build an approximate 1,100 square foot home. This home will sit back behind a cement horseshoe-shaped driveway, serving as the parking for this dwelling. Again, this driveway was already in place when we purchased the property. The damaged trailer was almost 1,100 square feet and had cement underneath it. The cement will be removed and replaced with the 1,100 square foot foundation for the new home. Again, flooding concerns related to a new build are not relevant, given the equivalent non-permeable substrate already existing on the property. We hope that you will agree building affordable new rentals in place of abandoned structures is an added benefit to our community. And since our plan meets R2 ordinance requirements, and with R1 and R2 single-family homes already in place on this street, we hope council will approve our rezoning request, allowing us to move forward with our development plan. And we thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Nathan, you don't want to speak? You're good. Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the public hearing? Okay. I'm going to conclude this public hearing ended at 6:49. We're going to go to the regular agenda. So we're going to do number eight. It's going to be deliberate and act on first reading of ordinance amending Article 4 of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance number 1027 by changing the zoning of land from R1, first single-family dwelling district, for property located at 607 Sunset Drive, also known as .3078 acres J. Smith Survey, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, to R2, second single-family dwelling district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for celibility, and providing an effective date. Does council have any questions on this? Comments? Oh, you want to talk on this, Carrie?
Can you hear me from this?
Yes.
This property is zoned R1. It is a large lot, like she said, 100 by 134. The intention is to re-lack to two lots to have two individual residences. Do you have any questions for me?
So Carrie, if you could please speak to the amended application, which I believe addressed the concerns that are in the packet from the near neighbors.
Yes. Originally, they had requested a rezone to R5 in order to have the two structures on the one lot. These are for long-term rentals. They have children that are growing that may end up with them as well. But there was some concern, I mean understandably, R5 in the middle of R1. So they actually withdrew that request before P&amp;Z ever voted on it and resubmitted for the R2, which makes so much more sense. And that's where we are now. And P&amp;Z did vote unanimously to approve the request.
I did attend the P&amp;Z meeting when this was brought forward. I thought, April and Nathan, you did a good job of addressing the neighbor concerns. I don't, there wasn't really anything that came up that appeared to be out of place for this request. So I'd make a motion to accept the first reading as presented.
Second.
Word one?
Aye.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion Texas. Okay. So we're going to, agenda item number nine, deliberate and act on a proposed professional service agreement by and between the City of Rockport and Fries and Nichols Incorporated for the study and update of water and wastewater impact fees. And I think it's Carrie again on this one?
So in your packet, there are the ordinances that established impact fees and then readdressed some of the way they were charged. But this is done in 2099 and 2000, and has not been updated since, that I can find. We need to get in and get those updated, get a new impact fee, CIP, presented to do the projects using impact fee funds. Now, those can only be used for water and wastewater projects that affect development. They cannot be used for replacing old lines or maintenance on lines. So we have a number of projects in mind that need to happen. So they would be perfect for the impact fee, CIP. Fries and Nichols did a nice job on their proposal. And there are, we can pay for their proposal out of the impact fee funds. That's one thing that is allowed. And we do have, we do have enough in there to do that.
Any comments or questions, council?
I do have a question. Is now the time that we should be addressing road impact? Or is it not the right time to lump this together?
Well, we do want to address that road impact, drainage impact. But now, the, really, we need to get these updated. Get the water and sewer updated, and then we can come back and give them some projects that need to happen for road and drainage. And they can do a study to see what that would be, what an impact fee for those things would be.
So we don't have a road impact fee now that would pay for a road or drainage impact fee study? So that would need to be a budgeted item going forward. We can pay for these impacts fee studies because we have an impact fee now. We have a pot of money that we can pay for this out of. The other two, we cannot pay for that out of this pot, if that makes any sense. But it would need to be a budgeted item.
That would need to be something we would have to look at to add into a budget.
Okay. Thank you. I know when we were up in TML, that was one of the items that had been discussed about trying to get those items kind of moving forward. So please do consider it. No further comment.
Any other questions or comments?
What's the approach with the payment for this?
The timeframe?
Uh, fees, the fees.
It's in there.
Is it?
I don't recall. I believe it's in there. $260,000, $680,000. And this, we're looking at months. You don't do this overnight. They have to do their study. They will come back to you to have council appoint a group to look over the study. And normally councils appoint their P&amp;Z board, the members, not the actual P&amp;Z, but the members, because they're already there. So we use them. And then there will be public hearings held. I mean, it's a process. So even if we started doing this tomorrow, you're looking nine months to a year before we get to the point where we can adopt the study, adopt the update.
I'd just like to make a comment. I mean, just in the last couple of years that I've been on council, I've noticed so many things that have gone to the wayside and not been updated. And I truly believe we're able to do it without having an extra burden on our finances. I think we need to get those things done because they should be updated according with, they should be every five years, not since 1999. That's a long time. So I would say that's, we need to start making sure that we do all these things. I appreciate you guys catching these things and making sure that we are updating it once we can go.
Mayor Bertum, I'm moving to approve item nine as presented.
Okay. Word one?
Aye.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
All in favor? Motion approved. Oh. What happened?
She asked who seconded. It was Brad.
It was the councilwoman's. Okay. We're going to go to agenda item number 10. And we're going to do upcoming budget schedule discussion questions. I'm guessing that is you.
Okay. So you all received a digital packet yesterday. You will get a binder on Friday for our work sessions on the first and third. Keep in mind, we do not have our projected tax rate or our tax rate options from the assessor, but she's going to try to get us something by the end of this week. So hopefully that Friday packet will have some preliminary numbers. We're not going to have the certified rolls until August 24th, which that's almost a month behind usual. Now, Michael Soto did deliver our valuations on Friday, but they still have 10% of their properties outstanding to be contested. They have to get down to 5% before they can deliver the certified rolls. So you don't have any, we did a 3% growth on the ad valorem taxes. But keep in mind that you need to be flexible in your head with that number and just consider the asks right now. And then we'll work with the tax rate to see where we land on actual estimates to fund the ask, I guess. It's not super scary.
August 24th to receive our...
Certified rolls.
Certified rolls.
Mm-hmm.
So can you update me on the budget process, the schedule after the 24th?
What we're going to do?
So hopefully, hopefully, the plan is that we have our work sessions. You guys are going to basically prioritize everything. And then when we get those certified rolls, we will have options. You know, you're going to have, I think we have like three options for tax rates that we can choose from. And you guys will know how much each one will bring in. And then you'll have to sit there and we'll just have to parse out, yes, we want to fund this level, no, we don't want to fund that. But I hope to have everything submitted prioritized so that it's very easy. We get this much money, this much falls off. You know, it may not be that simple. I know it's not going to be that simple. But it works that way in my mind. So it's just, you guys are going to have to know what we're facing, which I think we've done a very good job of giving you that. Or you will see very easily on the first what we're facing. And then you're going to have to make your decisions. I mean, we're just going to have to decide. Everything's not going to get funded. We've got some significant hurdles this year. I've let my guys know they've all cut as much as they can. We have some hurdles, but we can't do the same thing last year, next year with the same amount of money. So we just have to decide. We're just going to have to decide. I'm not trying to be vague, and I'll answer any direct questions because it's not a secret. I mean, there's just a lot of stuff to be funded. And like I said, we have some hurdles that are proving to be challenging. I mean, Robbie keeps coming back, but I haven't figured out why yet. Every day he shows up, we give him a new one.
So just to clarify, our workshops for next week?
First and third.
First and third. And those are open to the public. And what time are they at?
They're going to be in this room. We're going to start at 9:00 AM. I don't think we're going to stream them just because we're going to be in a more work setting and we're probably going to be back there. We'll have to, we'll have to see what we can do. But they are open to the public. We'll start at 9:00. Hopefully, we're going to, we're going to go all day. We'll probably be done about 4:00. Nobody can really take more budgeting than that. We'll bring in lunch. And then we'll decide at the end of day one if we need day two. If we need day two, we'll start at 9:00 o'clock again. And we're just going to work.
And I know you said it might not be streamed. Is it at least be recorded so people can look back at it if they look?
I don't think there's any requirement that it is. It's a workshop. So, you know, we're going to be here all day. We're going to be working. Certainly, if that's something y'all wish to do, we can work at it. But like I said, we're going to be in a more intimate setting.
I would prefer that it was be streamed, even if they can't hear it. Because we'll be probably in the center of the room in that horseshoe, if I recall, when we did the last couple of times. But at least we're not operating... But at least we're not operating in secret. But that's just my opinion.
No problem.
Streamed or at least recorded, one of the two.
You know what? I'm going to ask Bob what he can do. How about that? What he can do between now and Tuesday. Again, it is open. Anybody's welcome to go and say...
It's an open meeting, I get that.
...be here all day with us, because it would be exciting.
Some people can't get off of work, or if they want to watch it, then just make sure it's available to them. So that's kind of my only thing. The other thing I just, I also wanted to ask, so we have the October, the August 24th, but what is the deadline for us to get all of our dates in? Make sure that's clarified for everyone.
I don't have the calendar in front of me, but it is very clear on the calendar when we have to have our adoptions done and all of that.
It has two readings.
Two readings. We have to, with, the first thing we have to do is set the tax rate.
Tax rate has to be posted.
And then I think we have to have two readings of the budget after that.
Not to exceed. Oh, there we go. On August 8th, our meeting in August, city manager, charter has to present the budget, the purpose of budget, and then there has to be a record voting on the city council if there's a certain tax rate, and then there it streams down to certain requirements, and it has to be adopted by that last meeting in September.
Yes, ma'am.
There is a special meeting scheduled in September.
There, yes, okay. That's where I guess my concern was, if that first meeting in August, we have to, we won't have our certified rolls.
So...
I mean, and she has required by charter, so she'll have to present it with a statement that there's no certified rolls, and this is what we're doing.
Yeah. Because that's on the...
That is in the title.
That's on the 8th.
Right. And it says, it specifically says first meeting in August.
So y'all will have something, you know? We have to do the, after our workshops, I think everybody will be more clear. Everybody has to understand, this is beyond our control. You know, we're going to have to be flexible, we're going to have to be, we're just going to have to work hard in a crunch, but it's not anything that we can do anything about. I can't run over there and make them give us the appraised roll earlier. We are asking for an estimate, so it's going to send us an estimate hopefully this week. So that's at least going to put us in the ballpark, and then we'll just start whittling down, you know? I'm not trying to be flippant about it, but that's all we can do. You know, we can only work with what we have. And we're going to work hard. I'm going to tell you right now, these guys have been busting their butts. You know, we've been working hard, and we're going to continue to do so, and you're going to have a good product at the end, and you're going to know exactly where your money's going, or where it's gone.
When you provide you that estimate... You know, I think it's important to kind of ask how many unclosed protests there are still out there as well, because I know a large number of them have not been completed.
So he said right now, he's at 10%, and he has to get, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, if I'm just lying over here, but I'm sure I'm not, but he has to get below 5% before he can provide a certified roll. So right now, he said he's at approximately 10, so he's got to get 5% more resolved. Did he say it was 973? I don't remember the exact number, sorry. So we have to get to 5% before he can be certified. And I don't know what the protocol is if he doesn't get it to us, if he doesn't get under that 5% by then, you know, we're all going to be in a bind. I will tell you, we're not unique. This county is not unique. I've got city managers everywhere panicking on the list serve, so we'll get in the ballpark. We'll get in the ballpark this week, and then we'll just start narrowing it down. That's all we can do. That's all we can do.
You said it has to be under 5% or equal or below?
I don't know if it's under or equal. I would say probably equal to.
Any other comments or questions?
He just said he has to get to 5%.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, and you know, hopefully this all just works out, and we can get these answers more sooner than later in this situation. But like I said, on August 1st, 9:00 AM, if you guys want to join, please come join, and we'll get it out there for you guys, and if you guys have any questions or comments, you know, we're here, so.
As you go through it, as you have, if you, as you go through your budget, if you have questions, go ahead and get them out there. When you ask me a question, I will send your question and your answer to everybody, because if you have it, somebody else probably has it. And the more clear we come in August 1st, the probably more work we can do.
Is, at some point in time before the first, do you think we can put that on the website or working documents, or after the first, put those?
You know, I don't mind doing it, but without having any source of income listed?
It could get...
It kind of looks like a, I mean, it's, it's not that it's something that needs to be, you know what? We can put it out there. If you're going to look at it, you got to understand that there's no, you know, we don't have a tax rate, we don't have it, we don't even have a tax number.
But that's something that will be in the agenda pack, could be included in the agenda pack that goes out on Friday.
For the workshop?
Yeah, that could be part of the agenda package.
We just put it out there, that way public has eyes on it and knows that they're looking the same thing we're looking at.
I mean, everybody else can start going through it the same. I mean, there just has to be an understanding that we don't have a tax rule.
And that would give you the opportunity to explain that we have not approached, so that the public will know that as well.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I think that's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
If anyone has nothing else, we're going to move on to agenda item number 11. It's going to be reports from council, councilman.
I don't have too much to report. Tomorrow, I look forward to visiting the Rockport Culture Arts meeting that's held each month, so it'll be my first attendance, and I'm really looking forward to that. The Culture Arts District meeting tomorrow.
The Rockport Culture Arts District. That's her first meeting, so she's looking forward to it.
Can you see the microphone, does she have the little green light?
Little green light's on.
Okay. I think she's just in this now.
I'm probably not, no. I'm very monotone in that sense.
As I mentioned earlier, I was able to attend my first planning and zoning meeting last week. Still have a lot to learn. Appreciate staff answering my questions as we went along. I will note that everyone was in attendance with the exception of one member. My understanding is that person has been absent for quite some time, and so we really need to look at how we move forward with removing that individual who essentially, from what I understand, is a no-call, no-show. So we'll work with that, and then Carrie and I penciled in a date I'll get with you, Vanessa, to make sure that we can make it happen, so she can sit me down and get me caught up on what I don't know. But glad to be a part of that group and learn as we go. That's all I got.
Nothing new to report from Ward Three. Projects are moving forward on some of the drainage stuff, so that's great. And other than that, nothing to report.
Okay. For Ward Four, you know, I've met multiple times with a couple of citizens. We're obviously just, our discussion's drainage, and we're, you know, trying to discuss how budget would work for us in the long run. The other thing I'd like to think is I did have a meeting with our tree committee today, and they are looking to do a big undergoing of a event, Arbor Day. So they would like to bring awareness to our trees and stuff, and so they're looking to do an event with the city's help and a lot of people in the community's help as well. So just keep your eye out for that. It was about an almost two-hour meeting, so we went through a lot, but it seems like it's going to be something that everyone would be really interested, because I know this community cares about our trees and cares about our environment, so just keep an eye out for it, please, for the future. So, and I think that's all I have. And if anyone has anything else?
Motion adjourned.
All right. Any adjourn? Oh, sorry, it's 7:10.